Good evening. I'm in a call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on August 22, 2019. If able, can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do have one amendment for tonight's agenda. I'd move that we amend the agenda to that we adjourn to a work session after tonight's council meeting. Given that, can I get motion through a second?
I move, is it a second?
Yes.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all who are in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an amended agenda. And first up on our amended agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. And we do have a couple people signed up. The first one is Karen. Can you please state your full name and where you're from and keep your comments about three minutes?
I think I can do that, sir. My name's Karen Baldiga, and I live at 803 Livingston Street in Lacey, at the Westminster Estates subdivision. The reason I wanted to address the council tonight is that, like everybody here probably knows, there's been a lot of construction and expansion going on in our city. And my little area, from College Street Northeast that passes through to 17th Avenue Northeast, is four tenths of a mile. And of that four tenths of a mile, we get a tremendous amount of traffic. Now, I know you can't do anything about the traffic flow because it's a city street and it's open to public use. But I do believe that we can do something about the speeding that goes on through there. In the past, I have talked to folks from Public Works, and they have done a speed study. Unfortunately, the young intern that they sent out to do that speed study was limited in the time he could be there, so it wasn't at a time suggested for the amount of traffic that goes through that area. He could only stay about an hour and a half. But in that hour and a half time, he did 95 cars. That's a fair amount of cars for four tenths of a mile. The police department, hi Chief, how you doing? They were kind enough to put up their, one of their big radar signs that said your speed is. And that worked for a little while, but then they had to take it down. And things just kind of went back to normal, you know, people speeding through there. Now, what I know is, there's been all this construction on Britton Parkway. I'm sure everybody's seen all those apartments. Everybody's seen the houses that are now, you could pass a roll of toilet paper between the houses if you needed to. You could do that. What I understand, though, is that on 15th, they've cleared some lots, and there's a project that's been, I guess, approved to build more houses, more apartments, and a new school. Now, what's that gonna do to our little four tenths of a mile cut through? A lot of increased traffic with people wanting to get their kids to school, pick them up from school, hurry up and get to work, hurry up and get home to make dinner. Somebody's gonna get hurt. We've already had one accident in there where a guy was speeding and out of control. Unfortunately, he was under the influence that he crashed his car into a house on our street. That wasn't good. So, I've asked the Public Works folks, can we put up some new speed limit signs, a couple more, just to remind folks? No. I even offered to purchase them myself, to leave the city at any cost to do these things. They said, okay, you can't put up signs. Can we put in a couple of speed bumps? No, can't do that either. What happens if I just go get some yellow paint, sir, and just paint some lines there, just to get people's attention? Well, as soon as we're aware of that, we'll have to send somebody out to take them up. So you can send a crew out to take the lines out, but you can't send a crew out to put some lines there, just to get people to slow down a little bit. That's all we're asking. I've invited the police department to sit in my driveway, if they like, and take care of their monthly budget fall, and just sit in my driveway and write tickets. I'm happy to have them out, anytime, sir. I'm okay with that. So what I'm asking is, our neighbors are concerned. If you go through our little area, at times, I'm sure some of you have driven through there, you will see various little signs that say, please slow down, on both sides of the road, throughout. That apparently is the best we can do, and I think we can do better. So I'm asking this council to take this matter into consideration, considering what's gonna be happening with the increased traffic flow through there. And just so I know that you know I'm up to date on stuff, sir, I understand that the cut through from College to 15th, where that area they always talk about for the last 20 years that they're gonna open up, has been put on the agenda, and it's waiting for a budget approval, et cetera. Is that not correct, sir?
Yes, yes.
Okay. My understanding with that is it'll take approximately another year and a half to two years to complete that project, once even the budget's approved. So I'm asking the council to please take into consideration, help us. You won't put speed bumps up, you won't put additional speed limit signs in there. How about those little pads, cement pads that, you know, kind of the rumble pads?
Thank you, thank you for your little over on your time. We've gotten your message, and we'll, we'll pass this along to, see what we can do.
One last thing. One of the things I've said to folks is, I'm retired, and I have nothing better to do with my time than to come down here at least every couple or three weeks to bug the heck out of you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Harold.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Harold Jones, and for the record, I spell Harold, H-A-R-L-D. Tonight, I'm before you, not to complain, but to offer use of information that you're probably well aware of or not. I don't know how many people anymore subscribe to the Olympia newspaper. It's getting to be quite expensive, and I know, I don't know of too many that do, besides myself and my mother. But in this past Sunday, August 18th edition, there is an interesting story in there that I wanted to bring along and share with you, and it represents some significant historical significance that I wasn't even aware of. And that is, in 1909, President William Howard Taft took a tour of Washington State. The photo documents the day that residents of what is now Lacey came out in force to cheer on the president as he passed by rail through the small community. The Lacey Depot can be seen behind the crowd. Photograph selected and captioned by Deborah Ross on behalf of Olympia Historical Society and Bigelow House Museum. And for more information, they have a website. So I thought that was pretty interesting. And my point in coming to the meeting tonight is never underestimate the historical significance of the Lacey Train Depot that also housed Lacey's first post office. The rail line and train depot brought people to the sulky horse racing track, which at the time had national renown. The rail line also deposited folks from all around to recreate at more than 19 resorts on the shores of Lacey's five lakes, the largest being Gwynwood on Hicks Lake, operated by Gwen Hicks. Now, I don't know if you recognize the name Gwen Hicks. I had the rare pleasure to meet with him and spend some time with him about 25 years ago. He was also the first pilot to fly airmail from Washington to Idaho and Montana, and should be regarded as a true pioneer and significant historical figure in our community. Anyway, I digress. I want to personally thank the council members that voted in support of the replica train depot. Past references made as an $800,000 toilet do a disservice and disrespect of our significant historical past. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, our next I am up is a referral from our planning commission, the 2019 comprehensive plan amendment, the affordable housing strategy. Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In front of you tonight is the full slate of 2019 comprehensive plan amendments for adoption in ordinance form. That only includes one item, which is the city's affordable housing strategy. The reason that it is a comprehensive plan amendment is because it will be adopted into our comprehensive plan specifically as an appendix of our housing element. So here's the, the plan in front of you tonight. It was a two-year effort, mostly led by our planning commission that did a lot of fact-finding and led this effort. And so what you see in front of you tonight is as recommended by our planning commission. It's no secret that home prices in Lacey are going up. So not only single-family homes, but apartments, housing of all types. Home building is getting more expensive in general. Raw materials are getting more expensive, labor's getting more expensive, and our housing supply is at an all-time low. Buyers are coming in from more expensive markets. That's places like Seattle, King County, Pierce County, and as far away as the East Coast and California as well. And then income is lagging way behind housing prices. So incomes in our area are not keeping pace with the increasing house prices over time. This slide demonstrates something that's in the strategy itself that is really important to note, which is that approximately half of all single household earners cannot afford a one-bedroom apartment priced at $1,000 in our community right now. So by, by the term affordable, we mean they don't, they don't pay more than 30% of their income towards housing costs. So right now, about 49% do not earn more than $40,000 in Lacey, and so therefore cannot afford that one-bedroom apartment alone. When it comes to two-bedroom apartments at a price of about $1,500, approximately two-thirds are cost burden in their housing and couldn't afford a two-bedroom apartment on their own. So you think about it maybe as a single parent and kids, they would need to earn more than $57,000 per year in order for that housing to be made affordable. So that means about 33% of our community can afford a two-bedroom apartment. This slide also shows at the top, average wage earners across our community, what they make per year, and this dividing line here is right about $57,000. So you need to earn that amount to have your housing be affordable if you're in a two-bedroom apartment here in Lacey. So obviously, the city is doing a lot of things. The council, you have dedicated a large portion of your 2019 budget towards various items, supporting affordable housing, an affordable student housing program through North Hurston Public Schools, a turnkey ADU or accessory dwelling unit program that's currently under development, which will have pre-approved plans right at our front counter for people to pick up and use at no cost to them to do an accessory dwelling unit in their, on their property. Working with North Hurston Public Schools to establish the Family and Student Resource Center, as well as working with Salvation Army. You're also working with the Thurston County Food Bank to establish a location along Martin Way, the Veteran Services Hub over in Midtown Lacey, as well as hosting the Faith Leaders Forum to work with the faith leaders in our community to try to solve affordable housing issues, especially when it's related to homelessness and those that are in the most need. So there is the document itself. Like I mentioned, the planning commission did a substantial amount of outreach throughout this process. They did about a two-year timeline where they met with all varieties of housing providers, from the most affordable providers to those that are providing market rate as well, and everything in between. We also reached out to department directors and staff, as well as a laundry list there on, on the screen there of various community partners that sat around that back table and talked to the planning commission about the affordable housing strategy. We also did a presentation directly in front of the Thurston Thrives Housing Action Team, a presentation at the Mason County Workforce Housing Summit back in January, and a presentation to the Multiple Listing Sales Association that meets weekly here in Thurston County. So the document itself contains six overarching policies. First of all, the first policy is to help people stay in affordable housing, create a variety of housing choices, to create more affordable housing, to unlock the supply by building more housing, by making it easier to build, prioritizing our funding for affordable housing purposes, and to continue to support housing services regionally. These policies within the document lead into 14 potential action items. The, the action items themselves are not ranked, they are potential action items. And you'll notice in the document, too, that there's information on each one related to the advantages and disadvantages. So it gives us kind of a menu of options, and it gives the council some ideas if we want to address some of these things, how we might go about doing that. But there are some things that the council's already given us some early direction, and these should be our highest priorities, and things that you've actually already completed, even before adoption of the affordable housing strategy. The first is to reduce fees for affordable housing. You did that by extending the fee waiver that we also provided to Habitat for Humanity, to community housing development organizations, some zoning changes that are currently under work and are moving through the planning commission that you will see shortly related to homelessness, as well as some housing-related things in our residential neighborhoods, permit streamlining process, especially our pre-approved ADU program that I previously mentioned, city-funded infrastructure programs, and increasing the city's general fund for social services, so providing more money generally throughout your budget for housing purposes. And then finally, providing city-owned property to nonprofits to build units, which is part of that North Hurston Schools program that you've been working on as well. Overall, this also dovetails well in with our economic development policies. So housing is only affordable if you can afford it. In order to afford it, you have to have some kind of employment, or you have to have some kind of money to be able to afford your housing. So this is where our economic development policies come in. The housing policies support those economic development policies to provide greater opportunity for economic development throughout our community. Our economic development element also makes sure that we have, and we're working towards, bringing more higher-wage jobs, more family-wage jobs into our community, so people can afford housing. And finally, make sure that they don't have to leave our community in order to bring that money back, so that we're our, have opportunity within our own community to live and work. It's also important that as we move forward, that we monitor and measure our plan to see what level of success that we've had over time. So we're proposing to do an annual review to look at the data that we are receiving, to make sure we're making, we're making headway and that kind of thing, that we monitor and track, and that we also partner with Thurston Thrives through their Housing Action Team to make sure that we're in lockstep with what they're doing and track, make sure that we're tracking on their measures and targets. So with that, the planning commission held their public hearing back on June 18th. Your packet in front of you tonight contains the record of that hearing. Largely, the vast amount of feedback was, was very positive. And the planning commission did vote to recommend approval of the strategy as the 2019 comprehensive plan amendment, and you have an ordinance, again, in front of you tonight to do so. Before I turn it over to you for questions or comments, I just wanted to mention one more thing, which is a special thanks to members of our staff that worked really hard on this. I'm not the only one, I'm just the nice face up on the podium. So we, we had, this was really a team effort. Major thanks goes to Jessica Brant, George Smith, our Economic Development Coordinator, and Donna Feliciano in our Public Affairs Office, who did such a great job in putting this document together. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
For the record, the ordinance number is 1550. Is there any discussion?
I'd move to approve ordinance 1550, adopting the affordable housing strategy as an appendix to the housing element as the, as the comprehensive plan amendment for 2019.
Second.
Moving seconded. Now discussion? Let's go down. Deputy Mayor.
So, the look of this document is wonderful. It's so easy to read and get through. But I do have two questions. Partly, they came up in comments. And what is that list that says what's on hold? What we're doing, which is in progress, what we're starting to do, and then what's on hold? And two of them was to expand the multifamily tax exemption, and then use county recording fees for supporting homeless services. Could you just talk about why it's on hold first?
So the multifamily tax exemption idea is one where we, you actually get a property tax exemption for a certain number of years if you do multifamily housing in certain areas of town. And right now, we only have that specific to the Woodland District. The reason we haven't looked yet at expanding that beyond the Woodland District is that is really our targeted area to try to get more housing. And so we want to utilize that to, to an advantage within the Woodland District. We are seeing a lot of multifamily development in other areas of town. And so it doesn't seem like those really need to be jump-started as much as they do in the Woodland District. And as far as the recording fees, so that what we brought to your attention at the joint meeting, I think back in January or February, we brought that up as a potential idea. And the council's direction at that point was to continue to allow the county to support the homeless services through that money, that we already have regional providers that are getting that money. Otherwise, the city would have to establish programs ourselves. We would have to hire staff and do those kinds of things, and we just don't have the capacity right now to be able to do that. So council at that point gave the direction that those, those monies should be spent regionally through the county.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that got out to the audience.
Councilor Stein?
The one thing that stood out to me, reading this, was the, the number one goal was to help people stay in affordable housing, which otherwise they'd become homeless and just add to the, the growing problem. We have family friends that have disabilities that get housing vouchers, and I get both sides, too. You know, people own, own these houses. They wouldn't normally, they'd be vacant or even condemned in some instances. But they, they've, they get people in those houses and get a little income from them, but when the value raises to a certain point, you know, the property owners sell it for, you know, it's, it's a vicious circle, you know? And, and these people that got in there had to wait on the waiting list, only to be evicted because the house is now being sold for profit, because the value is raised. And now they go back on their waiting list and, and so where the, where the answer is, is probably, you know, it's more housing, but how do we do that? You know, there's, there's, it's a, it's a big problem. There's so many different facets and, and challenges at every angle. But in the short thing, more housing makes it more affordable. And so keep that in mind. But I just, you know, I want to make sure everybody understands both sides of the, of the aisle.
Thank you. Councilor Greenstein?
Thank you. So first, thanks for all the hard work on this. It, it looks great. There's a lot of really good stuff in here. I do have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. So first question is, where are we on, so we passed the, we've been able to waive fees for Habitat for Humanity, we've been able to waive fees for Homes First. Where are we on doing that with private builders who are gonna build affordable, you know, even with the stipulation that it be in perpetuity and all of those things that I think should be in place? Where are we on that? We've been talking about it for...
I might have to defer to the city manager on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's still on the priority list. We don't, we've not, we're not in a position, I guess, in the next three months to come back with a proposal.
Any particular, I mean, I'm just, I'm curious what the holdup is. We were able to do it for nonprofits. I don't know, I mean, we have an affordable housing crisis. We've, we've all just said that. All the jurisdictions have agreed to that. What's the holdup? I mean, this would get us more affordable housing.
Right.
What's the holdup?
Like, some of the debate has been, what is the proper average median income to use? Is it 80%? Is it 50%? We need to have that debate, and we just have not had time to address that issue. But, but that is forthcoming. We agree that's a priority.
Okay. My other question is, where are we on the ADU program? We've met, we've had meetings, we met with, you know, some builders, we did some of that. And then I haven't, and then it kind of fell off my radar, and I'm just curious where we are.
Yeah, so we, those plans are, are on somebody's desk being developed right now. So we expect that by the end of the year, we'll have those at our front counter, ready to go. So we have a meeting after Labor Day, the Tuesday after Labor Day, to sit down and look at the first round of conceptual plans. Like I said, it should be by the end of the year that we have those ready to go at our front counter.
That's fantastic. Are we also gonna go forward with what we had talked about at that last meeting, with having a community meeting, inviting the people in, having the banks there, having all the parties there, so we can help people get this thing going?
Yes. So we'll provide notice to the 2,200 property owners that we have that are eligible to have an accessory dwelling unit on their, on their lot, invite them in, have the designers right there, they can talk to them, have the lenders there that they can talk to, have the builders, too, if they'll come with us.
Fantastic. Thank you. I think that's, that's awesome. I think it's gonna be a great program. I do have, and I don't know if you want me to go on to someone else, Andrew, if you want me to just keep going?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So the two things that I have concern with are when we get to some of the, toward the end of this, when we talk about number, number 11 on there on the options, inclusionary zoning. I have serious concerns with inclusionary zoning in general, but particularly in the wording here on some of it. I have no problem with incentivizing builders to build affordable housing. In fact, I think that makes a lot of sense. That gets us what we want in a way that we're working together with our building community. I have real concerns when we put in requirements for percentages of affordable housing. Real concerns with that.
Again, these are all potential actions, and they provide advantages and disadvantages. And, you know, the, the council could act on all of them or none of them. And so really, it's, it's up to the council to, to lead these forward. They're just, you know, so that everybody's aware that these types of programs exist and what the options are.
And for clarity, then, if in fact, any of these options were gonna be proposed, they would come back before this council?
Correct.
So it would take council approval for any of these actions?
We'd have to change regulations for requirements for inclusionary zoning, and so that would have to come across your desk.
Okay, great. And then the last one that I also have a pretty significant concern with is the housing tax levy. You know, I see it somewhat, somewhat, I think, doing exactly the opposite of what we'd want it to, right? The idea of a housing tax levy, which would be a tax, a property tax, would help get money for building affordable housing at the same time that it raises the rents for people who are renting and forces more people into homelessness. To me, that's kind of oxymoronic. It makes no sense why we would think about raising property tax, which we all know, when you raise property taxes, rents go up, because people have to get that money back. It's making it more difficult for people to afford what they're already living in, in order to get money to build more affordable housing. It just seems, doesn't make any sense to me.
So I think that council member Greenstein puts up a, a good question. Is there gonna be a time where you're gonna come back to the council and go through these options, and where we can talk about which one of these actions we want to work on next? Or what is gonna be the trigger mechanism that's gonna allow us to maybe go forward with some of these actions and have these, these discussions, the well-needed discussions on some of these others? Like, the multifamily tax exemption, I, I have, in principle, I have a problem with that, too, where we're limiting other taxing jurisdictions from collecting taxes through our actions, you know? So is there gonna be a time where we're gonna go through these and, and say what we're gonna work on next?
I mean, there certainly could be something arranged. That might be something I look towards Scott to see if that's something that, you know, because these are things that touch on more than just what the planning department can handle. And so it's, a lot of these things are citywide initiatives. And so that's why I kind of am looking towards Scott. Obviously, you have some things that are working their way through the planning commission, and we'll bring forward in, in the joint meeting, probably here in the next month or two, some other ideas for the future planning commission work program that some of these items might land on. But some of these things touch other parts of the city, and so I wouldn't want to step on somebody else's toes.
And depending on the topic, as Ryan said, it could come through various forms. And reference to like the, the potential for the home fund levy, that'd be a conversation that council would have to see if that was a tool that would address any type of potential, be a funding source, potential, potential housing problems. But then also, then it would go to a vote of, of the general population, and it'd be a regional approach. Some of the multifamily tax exemption, that would have to, if that was something that was looked at as a way to increase opportunity for development, it'd go back to council, it'd be something proposed and come out through a work program to be initiated. So it just depends on which topic that it is. And the ADU program's another good example. That doesn't really take a ordinance amendment, but that's where we would brief that this project, program is ready to be initiated, and we would go forward with it based on, and keeping council informants' progress. It just varies with that, that menu and boxes.
So I guess my question for clarity, then, is, what we're approving, if we were to approve this today, is basically a toolbox. But none of these tools can be implemented without coming back before this council.
Right.
And I need to know that in order to know how to vote, because if either, if any of these could be implemented without it coming back before this body, I could not support this going forward. That's why I'm asking.
That's, that's a good question. Thank you.
So the follow-up question to that, is it in our purview at this point to make some amendments to this, or are we gonna accept this or reject this tonight as a council, just for procedures?
Right now, this is our, our housing strategy, and that, that potential action items as listed are just potential action items. Nothing, it doesn't put anything in motion that we haven't already agreed to. It's just set... It's just setting up the toolbox for us to come back and look at later if we want to take one of these tools out.
So I'm hearing it wouldn't be in our purview tonight to pick this apart. Okay.
Well, I mean.
In talking to the city manager.
Just trying to get the groundhog's.
We have the right to approve it, not approve it, make amendments to it, and approve something different.
But to keep in mind, it's a living document like any other, and it can be changed at any time.
Okay, well, my question's answered. Ryan, I really appreciate you. You you for the, over the years now, you 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 send, end up being here making presentations that are pretty significant and powerful, and and you're very, very excellent and professional and powerful and passionate about what you do. You're running against a council that's also passionate about what they do. So I'm going to miss sparring with you after I retire at the end of this year, I'll tell you that. So maybe we'll go to lunch sometime or something and chat. But I am overwhelmed with gratitude and thanks to the Planning Commission and to Ryan and the staff. This homelessness issue is a regional, state, national problem that's come to the front. But y'all have been working on this for two years. So you can't make that up. So really appreciate that bringing this together gets our head around it so that we're not making important decisions by the hip. We're we're doing it scientifically. This involves not just policy and things like that, but it includes economics, college-level economics. And we're looking at seven capable council members, but five business people on the council. So I think that that's why you're seeing these questions come up. My appreciation is for all of that, all of that hard work. I do tend to agree with the questions that councilmember Greenstein brought up and that the the mayor also weighed in on. One of my other concerns is the tenant that we would increase social services spending. So I've said this before, and I'll weigh in here again philosophically and economically. I believe it's the city's responsibility to identify the problems and and point them out to the community as far as social services go so that the community can respond. If the city is minimizing to the most ability the tax burden on the citizens, they'll have more money to respond. When a government pours into social services, technically, that's socialism. And it's a, it's something I I'm wary of. So I'd rather not see that tenant on there. And if it were to come, as it has before, to this seat, I'd I'd disagree with it. I also agree with, well, Dr. Ben Carson, our National Housing and Urban Development Director, on a soundbite, to be fair, says that the cause of homelessness is is overregulation. Well, we know from our extensive studies here and work that it's more complicated than that, but we still need to take the point that regulation is part of it, and that's been addressed here. So we're not hypocritical about that at all. It's part of the part of the solution, and how do we address that? So those are my comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Councilmember Zeman.
Thank you. I again want to echo the rest of the council in expressing appreciation for the team and working on this document. It is, as usual, incredible. However, I did see a couple of tools in the, that weren't in the toolbox. Things that have been discussed recently around a boarding program, which already exists in the South Sound Senior, excuse me, Senior Services of South Sound, something that could be expanded. I I don't like recreating the wheel. And so if something already exists, let's take a look at it and see how we can expand a boarding program, which serves twofold. It it certainly helps demographics like students and and those who would be classified as working poor, but also does help our elderly demographic in our community in two ways, by supplementing income as well as contradicting the isolation effect that people talk about a lot, which improves quality of life overall for multiple generations. The other toolbox, tool that we're missing from the toolbox is cooperative housing, which is very successful in other parts of this, of the country and other parts of the state. So it's something that I think we should consider looking at and putting in the toolbox.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Well, first of all, I would like to acknowledge that the chair of our Planning Commissioner, Commission, Paul Enns, and David from Planning Commission are here. And my work with Planning Commission was just as this was starting. And it's just, it's so exciting to me to see how far this has come and the beautiful shape that it's in today. I understand, you know, there may be some concerns with some of the ideas expressed in this document, but that's what they are. They're ideas for us to take and run with. So I I see our peers throughout Thurston County looking at Lacey going, wow, this is really cool. And I think we need to own that. And I think Rick, Ryan, and staff, you all have just done tremendous work on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to.
So I have just a couple of things. One is, I'm glad that councilmember Zeman brought up about the boarding and sharing of a house too, because that is a strong potential. And I know that the senior services are encouraging that and working towards that. But I just wanted to point out that somebody had said this is a living document, we can just constantly change it. But actually, this is an amendment to our comprehensive plan, which can only be amended once a year, if I understand. And that that doesn't mean we can't work towards adding stuff when we amend it. But we can't just constantly amend it every month or so. I just wanted to.
We can constantly amend it once every year.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Stev.
One last point I wanted to make is from 2008 to 2015, there was forty-four multi-housing permits issued in the city of Lacey. And in 2016, there's six hundred and eighty-one, and in 2018, there's six hundred and forty-three. That's over thirteen hundred permits in a two-year span. So people ask me all the time, what are you doing trying to alleviate these, this this huge crisis? And that's a hu, you know, you go from forty-four to thirteen hundred. That's that's a huge difference. Those are all people that wouldn't have housing. So it takes time. When you, when you take, you know, a seven-year period of not building them off and try to make it up in two years, that's not, that's not a good ratio there. So I just wanted to point that out. You know, Rome's not built in a day.
So councilmember.
So it appears we have a majority of our council that has some concerns or, as councilmember Zeman mentioned, some additions she'd like to make. I would suggest that we we pause a little bit, take a little bit of a work session, and, you know, noodle it a little bit and bring it back.
Councilmember Zeman.
I would agree with councilmember Hearn on that. And I just wanted to also say that I went to the Housing Action Team meeting recently, and they have compiled a data report. And I know you were supposed to say this acronym a different way, but it's the HMIS Housing Projects Data Report. And it's really fascinating information that's up to date and continuing to be updated. And I would like to see us making sure that we are are using that data because they have the most recent data and and using it for our document as well. Because what I'm noticing is that for client demographics of people who are already homeless, the two highest demographics are, of course, children, which we know is an issue through our North Thurston Public School system. But coupling with that is the the age demographic twenty-five to thirty-four, which I imagine are these children's parents. So I would like to see this, again, another tool to specifically target certain demographics to, which I think councilmember Greenstein mentioned, or was it councilmember Stev about stopping the flow, preventative measures. I'd like to see that happening more in this document.
Councilmember.
So for the good of the order, I took mayor and the deputy mayor's advice from last week. And the next day, I went and visited the Plum Street Organization. And I was massively impressed with the strategies that they're using and employing. Would love to share my experience with the council at at said work session.
So it would be my opinion that we go ahead and and pass this 2019 Affordable Strategy Comp Plan Amendment. And then, you know, pretty soon that we get together a work session to start talking about some of these strategies. And at that point, we can take a look at and focus if we need to. This doesn't prevent us from doing anything going forward. This is just a a tools, toolbox, an overall strategy. We want to focus in on, for example, you know, house sharing. That is actually a conversation the city manager and I have been having for several months. And we have, I think, a meeting going to come up here pretty soon to talk about a little bit further on what the next steps would be to then bring it from the council and and discuss that. So I don't think this prevents us from doing anything going forward. I I would, I would like to pass this Comp Plan Amendment today, and at least so we have a basis to work on. And and then we can, we can tweak it from there. But that's, that's just my point. Councilmember.
Now, I would just add that the one thing it does prevent us, remember, this can only be done once a year, the amendment. So if this is not how we want it, why not take it back to work session, work on it, get it how we want it before voting on it so that we put it into the comprehensive plan the way we actually want it? If there's changes that we want to make.
I'm going to refer this to Rick.
So there are, there are a couple of options, and the council's working through that as to do the conversation. Just want to talk about timing. Generally, we do our Conferency Plan Amendments the once per year, and generally, it's in the July-August timeframe. The next time we probably could schedule a work session would be the end of October. And then then go back to adoption, it'd be earliest in November if there was some agreement on what changes those would be to add or or clarifying the document. The other way to look at it is this is a starting point. And we can, the council can move forward with this document with the idea that we can still continue to have these conversations because the the housing issue is has many facets. And as there's many newer things always coming out. And we will have a joint meeting in January with the council and the Planning Commission to talk about the work program going into next year's Conferency Plan cycle. And we can also reserve space to talk about some of these initiatives and have some precursor work sessions to lead up to that joint meeting in in January. And that would include also any private applications to be considered for the docket. So there's another path in order to have these conversations, but also to continue with the document if you, if council so wished to, presented today.
So councilman Cox.
I absolutely agree with the mayor that I think we should vote on this tonight. I think it's a guiding document. It doesn't restrict us from doing other things such as the boarding and and other ingredients. And I mean, this group has been working on this for over two years. And at some point, you have to stop and say, good enough, we can tweak it next year if there's something we want to add. But let's move on it tonight.
That's mayor.
So I too agree that we need to have passed this, partly because if we delay it, it will be delayed even longer. It takes a while for the Planning Commission to get together, to come up with more actual parts of this document. It would be next year anyway. So we we would be better off moving forward, putting it into our affordable housing strategy under the Comp Plan. And it it also sets a chapter for our Comp Plan so that we have something that we can work from. And I think the more we delay, it would be, you know, it would be, it would add to an additional workload for staff because they're working on other things as well. And I I just don't think that's productive.
Councilmember Stev.
A further caution that any delay further in this gets us more into the budget season. And so every year, we could just, we could add this to the the budget discussion. And the meetings are already, you know, pretty tight for the end of the calendar year. And it would just add another unnecessary dynamic or challenge to that.
So is there any other discussion? It's been moved, and it's been seconded to approve the ordinance adopting the Affordable Housing Strategy as an appendix of the Housing Amendment, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for 2019. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is the mayor's report. And I'm going to actually break this into two separate motions. There's a couple recommendations to appoint youth representatives. One is to Jason Griffith to the Parks Board, and one is Sage Natsaka as the youth representative to the Stork Commission. And I would move that we appoint both those young gentlemen to the Parks Board and the Stork Commission.
Second.
It's been moving seconded. Is there any discussion?
Are either of them here?
Sage is here. You want to come up and introduce yourself? Oh, they're both here.
Oh, good.
So both Jason and Sage, you want to come up and introduce yourselves? Right here. It's Jason.
Hello, my name is Jason Griffith. I'm a senior at Timberline High School, and I'm with the Parks Board.
Yes.
That was it?
And Sage?
I think so.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Sage Natska, and I'm, I'll be a eleventh grader at Timberline High School. And I look forward to serving the Historical Commission and serving the Youth Council as well as the City of Lacey. Are there any questions or you have?
Jason.
I have questions from both of you. Thank you very much for being here. It is kind of a tradition for us to grill you a little bit. I'd just like to have you say what your plans and hopes are. I mean, you're running for a reason, and and you want to serve for a reason. We'd love to hear about that.
Go ahead, Jason.
Okay, do you think you could like repeat the first question again?
What do you, what are your, what's your purpose for for seeking this opportunity to serve? What do you hope to see and what are your, what are your hopes?
So originally, I had heard about this, like, this whole like opportunity through my AP US history teacher. And it just, it just sounded like a good opportunity to this, like, be of service to others. And that's all I really wanted was just to live a life of service and.
What do you hope to accomplish?
What I hope to accomplish?
Any ideas? Or you're going to take it as it comes?
I'm sorry?
Or you're going to just take it as it comes? I'm being mean. You want to change the world, right?
Yes, sir.
Jason, both.
Hey, Jason, you have me at service to others. I'm a big fan of yours already.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah, so I don't really have a, well, I just want to serve the city of Lacey as a start for, I just, I have a really big devotion for politics, and I also love history as well. And I thought that starting here would be a good introduction, beginning for me, just to get the experience. And hopefully, I'm planning in my future that maybe I can, right from here, I can just go to the federal level and get involved in politics. I would just want to get involved in changing people's lives and make a positive, be a positive attitude and make positive changes. That's just my whole ambition, why I want to start here.
That's great. Now, remember, we're nonpartisan, there's no politics here. That's at the federal level. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Jason and Sage, for being put on the spot. You guys, you guys have both had great interviews. We appreciate you guys coming up here and talking too.
Did we say yes yet?
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jason and Sage, Jason to the Parks Board and Sage to the Stork Commission. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations to you guys, and I'm sure you guys will be getting to work here soon.
Thank you.
The next up is a recommendation to reappoint to the Stork Commission. And as you see, there's, there's several members that are up for reappointment. It's Eric Abel, Kim Goetz, Sarah Thirtyacre, and Alan Tyler. and Alan Tyler. And so I would move that we reappoint them all to the historic commission.
Second.
Seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and they'll be happy to know that they've been reappointed.
They do all want to be reappointed.
They do.
No one's here? Nobody's here?
Uh, nope. Although I talked to Eric earlier and we are already talking about ideas for student projects coming up for the next year. And so they're going to go back and talk to their respective boards and commissions and talk over some ideas on how to keep our youth engaged and talk about some projects that by mostly maybe looking at the work plan and seeing how the work plan, you know, what may be something they can take on and champion. And so I'm really looking forward to hearing what the boards and commissions come up with for the, for the youth commissioners. So next up is the city manager report. Do you have anything? Okay. Then we'll go to standing general committees. First up is the community relations committee.
Thanks, mayor. This one's kind of long, but I don't have reports when it comes to my other committees. So, community relations and public affairs committee met on August 5th at 11:00. First on the agenda, myself and councilmembers Zeeman and Cox were both present, all present. First agenda item was the family entertainment series at Long Lake Park. Jenny Wilson, Rick Supervisor, presented an update on the family entertainment series at Long Lake Park. Six weeks of free entertainment on Thursdays with a goal of attracting families to the park similar to Hunter Park Series. Performers included Hoop Smiles, Northwest Animal Adventures, balloon artists, steel drums, the Bubble Man, and mini boats. Changes to the swim area have been well received with compliment, comments, equally balanced between positive and negative with community and lifeguards alike. And in regards to that, today we had the grand opening at Long's Pond for the dock, reused it for the failing dock that was at the youth fishing pond there. So. Wonderwood Park Playground Equipment Update. Jim Burbage, directors of Park and Rec, provided an update on the progress showing the new play structures on Stikes Roadside, which is complete pending inspection due this week. Second swing structure will be completed in approximately another week from that date, at which time the final inspection will be completed. The grand opening is dedicated and scheduled for September 19th. I take it we passed all those inspections? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard from several people really good, positive feedback on it. So, great job on that. Thank you.
And then the 3rd of July event recap. Jordy Rec, Recreation Coordinator, shared the successes of the July 3rd fireworks spectacular. Tendence was well over 10,000 with the estimation of exceeding over 15, but from what I heard, it was probably closer to 20. Yeah, probably passed even. Realignment of the event area setup was improved from the prior year, allowed for better flow through the park, improvements in law enforcement presence and handicap, which I prefer to say disabled parking also contributed to the successes. Lessons from the event will be applied for next year to include signage and increased advertisement for the inner-city transit busing availability. And then the last, second to last agenda item was the Washington Center's Free Day Use Applications. Scott Spence, city manager, provided background with current contract with Washington Center for the Performing Arts. City of Lacey is entitled to use of the facility two days per year at no additional cost. In 1992, the city of Lacey created Washington Center policy to provide guidelines to respond to requests from organization, outside organizations for the use of the city's free days at the Washington Center. Currently, the policy advocates one day per year to nonprofit organizations, one for city-sponsored events. As the city currently has no plan to utilize the free day in 2020, both free days are available for nonprofit agencies. Three applications were received this round were given consideration by the committee Pizza Clash, Thurston County Food Bank, Rotary Club of, and the Rotary Club of Lacey. Councilmember Cox moved to designate one free day in 2020 for Thurston County Food Bank and one for Pizza Clash. Councilmember Zeeman seconded it and the motion was carried. This action will go to full council with committee recommendation.
Which is what we need to do right now. So there needs to be a motion to approve the two applications for the Washington Center, one for the Thurston County Food Bank and one for Pizza Clash.
I would move that as chair if it's appropriate.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
I felt during the meeting from the committee that with all our compassionate community involvement, that the food bank seemed like a slam dunk. It's, nothing bad is, I mean, it's only good things that come from the food bank. So that really only left, in my opinion, between Pizza Clash and Rotary of Lacey and both had been, had used these days before. So there is really no wrong answer and I felt comfortable with the decision made by the committee.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded to approve for the Washington Center, Thurston County Food Bank, and Pizza Clash. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And the last agenda item was the Spirit of Lacey Award criteria and the honor wall. Scott Spence, city manager, presented to the committee that Lacey Civic Plaza be considered as an honor wall site. The honor wall would memorialize men and women who died in combat. Examples were provided to illustrate how the honor wall would recognize individuals that made the ultimate sacrifice. Discussion also included the timeframe for inclusion on the honor wall. In conjunction with the honor wall, a proposed change to the Spirit of Lacey Award language was made to clarify the eligibility to Lacey's highest civilian award. The committee was in favor of the concept and creation of a place of reverence. Staff will provide an update to the committee as the final concepts near completion. So, yeah, I'm excited for the honor wall and how that will turn out or look like is really a community thing. It'll be community-driven and.
Is there a timeframe on discussions for that?
Well, no, that was, that was one of my, that was one of my two questions. Yeah, that's great.
So for the benefit of maybe the full council, the community relations committees have been talking about this for some time. It was born out of a request to have the Spirit of Lacey Award be considered for someone who had basically paid the ultimate sacrifice and dying in combat. The committee decided it would be better to honor those, memorialize those men and women serving in combat at the basic of the flag plaza. So we were coming up with concepts, trying to figure out a timeline. What periods of time do you include on that? So we're still working on that. So once we get close to that, we'll do another update and figure what that looks like. There's actually been some consideration. Do we expand it not just to Lacey but actually Thurston County? Just given, you know, the magnitude and the numbers, it may make more sense because it is difficult, especially when we're talking about previous combats or conflicts previous to our incorporation. Were you in Lacey or not in Lacey, but you lived here technically now, but not in World War II. So we're looking at those issues.
That's fantastic. That's a great, great idea. I mean, we're a military community. This is super fitting for this community. My one question was on the Spirit of Lacey Award language. What was, what was changed? I mean, was there some significant change to that or what?
So it would.
Or does that involve, I'm a little confused.
Yeah, they're related. So if someone wanted to submit an award, if someone died in combat, we would refer them to, they should be placed on the honor wall.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is the utilities committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Utilities committee met and we had three main points of discussion. First was the water leak detection and well meter calibration. And staff presented the updates on the water leak detection and source meter calibration programs. The city started the leak detection program in 2007 in response to a municipal water law that was issued in 2003. The law requires a water use efficiency program that prevents more than 10% water loss. To support the effort, the city uses both digital leak detection and ground microphone listening equipment to detect leaks. By using these programs, the city has successfully achieved less than 10% accounted for water as required by water use efficiency rules. And goodness, what is his name? So sorry. Oh, Justin. Justin showed us a leak that started and it's by sand. And it was so small, but then as the leak got, it was like that big. And it's incredible how much water you can lose doing that. So this whole program is really very efficient and quite fascinating. The second thing we discussed was most, and it was mostly focused as a discussion on stormwater permit reinsurance, which is issued by the Department of Ecology. This permit covers 2019 to 2024. The purpose of the permit is to protect and restore water quality. The permit allows us to discharge stormwater runoff to surface and groundwater so long as the city remains within compliance. With each new permit, compliance requirements increase as well as responsibility to maintain the previous cycles required. And there are compliance deadlines. The compliance actions, target, and schedule is documented in the stormwater management program, which is available in the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan. Key components of the Stormwater Management Plan program include public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, the control of runoff from development and construction sites. The Stormwater Comprehensive Plan is currently being updated. The deadlines for the completion began on August 12th and will run through summer of 2020. The purpose of the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan is to guide programs, activities, and projects for storm and surface water utilities and to ensure continued compliance. It also provides info and transparency to you, the rate utility pairs, which is very important. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. And last up is the transportation committee.
So transportation met on August 6th at noon and the first item discussion of discussion was Lebanon Street, a citizen-driven request for some traffic calming. Typically, that kind of request demands 60% of the property owners to become real. And, but the committee considered the policy in this case to move forward with some temporary traffic calming based on not only some of our evidence, but also the new construction. So the citizens were having some difficulty getting the 60% because some of the property owners were not residents. So it was an extenuating circumstance that the committee considered when. And so right now the temporary traffic calming is in process for future review. The next item of discussion were construction updates. I have a list here. I'm wondering, Roger, if I can put you on the spot a little bit because we've had a little rain since August 6th. And I think that affects our construction. Please?
Thank you, councilmember. Yes, we're a little bit behind on the, our, what we call the Super T. And Yom Highway Rehab.
Roger, can you speak into the mic, please, a little bit more? Can you speak into the mic more?
Pardon me. Oh, there you are. So we, we had a rain day on Wednesday. That was a scheduled paving day. Seems like every time we schedule paving, we get a rain day. It's more than a coincidence nowadays. But we'll bump it further into next week. We are on the Super T project. We are on phase four of a five-phase project. And we began grinding through the existing asphalt at the intersection of College and Yom today. We'll complete that grinding tomorrow. And then next Tuesday and Wednesday, we'll pave that section and then go back to the missing section on Yom Highway that is near the Shaleus Western on next Thursday. So that's our plan to at least get us through phase four, weather permitting.
The big question, I think, on many people's minds is the Mountain View Roundabout and how that's rounding out here at the end of the summer.
Well, I guess the most significant event at the mountain, the College and 22nd Roundabout, excuse me, is the actually rebuilding the Mountain View School, Elementary School's parking lot. And we, our contractor last week met all of the physical elements, construction elements to actually complete it within the time period and of course not incur a penalty. Actually, he can incurred an incentive for it. So what we've been working on this week is 22nd Avenue that is adjacent to the parking lot for Mountain View Elementary. And we will continue to bring it down to its final grade and then pave it. Our plan is to pave it next week. Again, weather permitting. But that's our, that's our goal right now is to literally have Mountain View's access ready for school year.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the report. I think it's been really fascinating to see this overlay project happen with the equipment that comes in and grinds it down. It's a huge piece of equipment. And I've been really happy, for the most part, with the progress and how quickly they progressed. I know we've ran into some rain, of course. You know, here we are in August, supposed to be our driest month and we have had rain. But I look forward to that project being completed. And it's been sort of fascinating to see it progress. So I appreciate it and we'll keep our fingers crossed, knock on some wood.
On that, on that project too, I would, I would hope that our bikers are happy because those monstrous biking lanes are not what they wanted, but there's some pretty good bike lane at, real estate there. I hope they're happy.
For sure. Councilmember?
There's always growing pains with any project, but you said Wednesday and Thursdays. Those are good days because Fridays and Mondays are, you know, people are like, oh, really? On a Monday? On Friday?
Well, great. Thank you for your report. Now we're on to boards, commission reports. I'm up first. I do not have a report. I've been working quite diligently for the transportation policy board on our upcoming retreat on September 11th. I've had several meetings and we're getting ready to wrap that up. It's going to be a really important retreat because as I've mentioned, I think to this council before, the process of how we've allocated federal funds is changing. We've been on a policy-based, for the most part, decision-making when it comes to Alcan funds, federal funds, that has to change. And so we're going through that process of what that will look like going forward. It's going to sort of significantly change how we use federal funding for transportation projects regionally. And so we're looking forward to that retreat. We have a great moderator and it should be a productive day. And so that is my report. Deputy Mayor?
So the Joint Animal Services Commission won't meet until August 28th and ORCA, Olympic Region Clean Air Agency, doesn't meet in August. LOT met, LOT Clean Water Alliance met Wednesday, August 14th. And as you know, there's a work session and then a business meeting. The work session consisted of reviewing the draft collaboration strategy and draft MOU between LOT and the Squawson Island Tribe to work together on potential water quality and habitat enhancement projects. There was a discussion about Olympia's Downtown Improvement District, or DID, which is relatively new, which they want LOT to pay into, based on assessed value of linear feet of LOT's frontage. And there's advantages. It would help with cleanup, sidewalk sweeping, scrubbing, and power washing, littering, litter removal, and landscaping maintenance. And would last through, the last, for 10 years. At first, though, they wanted to assess LOT on their highest assessed value, which is enormous inside the perimeters of LOT. Luckily, the executive director mentioned that it isn't accessible to others to get in there and start cleaning. And it didn't make sense. And so he, they agreed and talked about linear feet around the perimeter. But luckily, right now. But luckily, right now Olympia is still even talking about whether to move forward with the DID. And as I said, it has some good points. But hopefully, LOT isn't going to carry the most of the weight of the rest of downtown Olympia's costs and stuff. So that's the big issue. They, we talked about, yes? Oh, okay. We talked about purchasing property on, near the Martin Way Pump Station. And because of the, they want to increase expansion of that area near Burlington, the Burlington store where the pump station is. And the board members also suggested staff look at part of the parking lot near Burlington, which also, you know, they own the property that they were first looking at. But maybe moving farther into the parking lot might be easier, but as far as environmental impacts. Then we had a discussion on Puget Sound nutrient source reduction effort. And Ecology announced to all the wastewater purveyors along Puget Sound that they are looking at a general permit for nutrient control requirements, primarily nitrogen. Luckily, LOT is the only one that has this part of our NPDES permit, so we're doing that. But other wastewater treatment plants are quite upset by this and wanted LOT to oppose it. But since we're already required to do it, it really doesn't make sense to object to others doing their part, too. And I think it actually would help LOT in the long run because a lot of the nutrients wouldn't be coming down into Bud Inlet. So that it probably would show a better nitrogen levels would be decreased by cutting, removing nitrogen from other plants. But anyway, that's still being discussed. And then for our business meeting, we had a presentation by the Department of Enterprise Services on their Capital Lake Estuary EIS Long-Term Management Project Update. And by, just so you know, I'm actually representing LOT on that EIS project. What they're asking is their stakeholders to be willing to help pay for the implementation of whatever the final decision is at some undecided amount. And we'll be talking about this decision at our next business meeting since we had the presentation. And there's pros and cons. So, and then we had a hearing on LOT's surplus equipment. And after the hearing, we took action, which allowed LOT to surplus the list. And what we're going to start doing now, rather than have this big, long list every year, and we have to have a hearing every year, is to have it monthly, so it's a shorter list. And we'll open the hearing, close it, and if there's no major comments, it'll just go on to our consent agenda. And then, let's see. We also, one of the really neat things is LOT was selected to receive the National Utility of the Future Today Award for 2019. And this award celebrates forward-thinking, innovative, resilient utilities that provide value-added services to communities. And this is a program by both the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, the Water and Environment Federation, the Water Resource Foundation, and the Water Reuse Association with input from EPA. And also, the other award was also to Megan, and I misspelled her name, so, but her name is Megan something. And I can't remember what it is now, but LOT's Water Quality Analyst III, and who will receive the Laboratory Analyst Excellence Award at the September Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association in Portland. And then after closing the meeting, we took a tour of the Ultraviolet Disinfection Upgrades and the reconfigured parts storage space, which was amazing from watch, after taking a tour before it began, a little bit into its process. And now where it's at, it was pretty spectacular how much they got done. And that actually will be more energy-efficient and better for doing what needs to be done. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox?
Righty. The Regional Housing Council met right before this meeting this evening. And Councilmember Greenstein joined us for the first time at this meeting. We got our first look at what our technical committee has put together, a couple of proposals, proposed models for how a proposed site that would support homeless people at Carpenter Road and Martin Way, what that might look like. I think we had a general consensus that we want to start small, have a phased-in approach on this. I think everybody agreed that in order to make this a success, that we need to go to the higher staffing level model, which, of course, will be more expensive. But I think they can pretty well demonstrate that there is a critical mass of staff that's needed in order to make sure that things run well. And it accomplishes what we would like it to accomplish. Couple of decisions that are looming as which of the four governments, we've got the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, and Thurston County, will be the lead entity on this. And the consensus was it's going to either be Thurston County or Lacey. I think that will be part of the conversation when we meet.
Thurston County prefer.
Well, yeah. When we meet next week with county commissioners in a special meeting. So that is on the table. And the other looming thing that council is going to have to wrestle with is getting a look at these proposals. The technical staff is going to meet, I think, within two weeks and send us refined proposals that I would like to discuss with council and looking a little more closely at financial models. And then we're going to have to be able to report back on September 19th what Lacey is willing to put into this and how we feel about the model that's coming forward. Understand, Lacey has one vote on this. It's, you know, it's something that we needed four votes to get to a yes on. So more to come, but I think, I think it's headed in a very positive direction. The Health and Human Services Council met a couple of weeks ago. And we reviewed the model that we did this year, having a review team go over the proposals for grant funding. Our own Jacob Ewing was represented Lacey on this. And for the most part, I think the reviews from the provider community, as well as the review team, were very positive. I think all of them said they'd be willing to do this again, which is a good thing. We reviewed the performance reports from the agencies that had received one- and three-year funding and for the 2018, 2019 year. And the reason for this is to make sure that the public dollars that we're committing to these programs are being used to full advantage. And there was, there were no red flags in this year's crop. So that is good. The five-year homeless plan that the county is working on, Keely Merino, the county's homeless coordinator, is going to be briefing county commissioners on September 12th on that. And she'll be coming to the various councils, including us, in September or October to learn more about that. And then quickly, we received kind of a 101, if you will, on the, it's called the 1406 Funding. And this was a proviso that the state legislature did this year that allows cities and counties to retain part of the sales tax that they collect to use for affordable housing and supportive housing. And so we are going to be asked whether Lacey wants to retain part of the money or give it all to, let the county collect our share, but with some sort of an interlocal agreement about how that money would be used. And of course, I think most of us are looking at that pot of money as something that would help support homeless services there. That was the CIP. And then let me quickly get to, Inter-City Transit had a very exciting meeting last, yeah, last night. I'm all about celebrations, but they sent a team to the State Rodeo. It's the State Transportation Conference and Rodeo, that's R-O-A-D-E-O, that was held August 18th and through the 20th in Seattle. And for the fifth year in a row, Inter-City Transit brought home the grand champion award. And you'll recall, I reported a couple, well, it's been two months ago or so, that they came home with second place in North America and the best driver in North America. They are tearing it up at the Inter-City Transit. So I'm hoping that we, you know, they weren't able to make it at the scheduled time, but I'm hoping we can get the teams here and recognize them for their hard work there. We had a representative from STAN-TAC, which is architectural and engineering, gave us an overview of the Patterson Street Base, the maintenance, operation, and administration master planning effort. And that included, I think, and I was really happy to see this, a discussion on emerging technologies. It's really good timing that they're basically redeveloping that whole site that we can start to plan in at least space for and minimal infrastructure to support whatever alternative fuel that we end up going to, whether it's battery electric, whether it's hydrogen cell. But I mean, the future is going to be, you know, buses that probably are not going to all be diesel in the future. So that was exciting to see. And then we heard a presentation about the role of Inter-City Transit in emergency management for the county. And they do play quite a role in that. That is my report.
Thank you much. Next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
Thank you. So I have one report tonight, and that is Emergency Medical Services, which met on August 21st. I had a really interesting presentation from an organization called Dispatch Health. They started, have you heard about them? Yeah. They started actually in Denver, in the Denver metro area, working with their fire department there. And their mission was, how do you cut emergency room visits for the unnecessary emergency room visits by 40% was their goal. They, they didn't quite make the 40% cut, but they did make a significant impact. And even bigger, they saved the patients over a million dollars in that, in a one-year, actually 18-month period. Over a million dollars in savings in cost from what people would have paid going to emergency rooms. Well, they are now here in Thurston County. So they're operating here currently. It's called Dispatch Health. And basically, they can perform virtually, they say it's about 80% of the services that an emergency room can perform. And pretty much everything that an urgent care center can handle. They work with all the insurance companies. So the cost to a patient is only the same copay as if you went to an urgent care center. But instead of going, you get to sit in your house, call them, and they come to your house and do the same services. They can cast broken bones, they can do stitches. I mean, they have EKG machines, they have a full pharmacy, they can take blood, instant blood tests. So like, you know, for like the quick flu and all those kinds of things, immediate testing right on the spot. And the cost is the same as going to an urgent care center, but you get to sit on your own couch waiting. So kind of a cool thing. Right now, it's brand-new in Thurston County. They are operating in King County, actually Seattle, Tacoma, and Olympia, you know, Thurston County area for now. They're opening Spokane and Boise are their next two. But they're now in 14 regions in the country and served over 80,000 patients last year. So pretty, really cool stuff. And because they're so new here, their response time's about 10 minutes. They said in most places, response time's about an hour and a half. But right now, they're at about a 10-minute response time. So 10 minutes sitting on your own couch rather than being at an emergency room, sounds like a pretty cool idea.
What are they called, Medic Uber?
It's called Dispatch Health.
Okay, Dispatch Health.
Dispatch Health, yeah.
Better name.
Anyway, that was a really, a great presentation. Thoroughly enjoyed that. Couple of other things. As of August 9th, EMS has trained 4,261 citizens in CPR in Thurston County. That's the most we've ever done in a year. That's, that's pretty phenomenal. That contributes greatly to why our survival rate in heart failure is the second-highest in the country. We're well over 50% in Thurston County when someone's heart stops and actually them surviving it, going to the hospital, getting back out, compared to some cities that are as low as like 6% and 7%. I mean, so it's a dramatic difference. This is where you want to be if you're having a heart attack.
Were we one-time first?
Don't get any ideas.
No, we've been, we've actually been right behind Seattle, very close to Seattle for many, several years now.
It's only a couple of percentage.
Yeah, it's like a 2% difference. Through June, we are at 40% of our total expense budget. So doing really well on the expense side. Revenue is right on track with what was expected. That sounds better than it really is. The reality is a couple of larger expenses that come later in the year can probably wind up at about 90, 95%. So still not bad, still doing pretty well. And then the last thing that, to touch on is that we're in the process of contract negotiations on replacement of all of the cardiac monitors in the ALS system. That's the Advanced Life Support System. The ones we're using currently are from 1998, is when they were starting, we started using them. And they've actually come, December 31st of this year, they will go out of service. The company that manufactures them will no longer service them. Still can get some parts and things on the secondary market, but there'll be no more service for them through the manufacturer. So it's time to upgrade those, and that's in the process right now. And that is my report.
Great, thank you. The city manager and myself, we meet with Lacey Fire District Three and their commissioners. And it was great to hear that program. And you're right, they haven't been here for very long, but they've already seen a huge impact. And if you have insurance and you just have to pay your copay, and they'll call them up and they'll come straight to your house. I mean, that's just absolutely amazing. They haven't had to advertise it very much, but it's, it looks like it's going to be a very popular choice. And it's going to hopefully cut back the dramatic times we're seeing in the emergency rooms. And so there's a lot more work to come to reduce the numbers in the emergency rooms. But this is a great first step.
Also reducing calls for 911, you know, which is huge because there's a large expense to Medic One, you know, sending out our paramedics. And we only have a limited number. So anything we can do to reduce the call volume to them will help the entire system. They operate seven days a week currently from 9:00 to 9:00. So 12 hours a day. They'll expand that as they get the volume up.
And so how do, if you're having an issue, is there a number you call? I didn't quite get that.
Yeah, so you actually call a phone number. You can either call or you can go online, you do it either way. They take you through a series of questions, similar to what a nurse hotline would do. They go through a bunch of stratus call, is what they call it, to determine whether you're appropriate for them to come or if you really should have called 911 or, you know, and get to a hospital. So you know, you're having chest pain, you know, crushing chest pain and you can't breathe, they're going to tell you, call 911 and get to a hospital. But for most things, they're able to treat. And they do, they will, they said less than 5% of their calls, once they get out there, do they then have to recommend someone going to the hospital.
Excellent.
Should we put that number on the website?
Yeah, I think let's have some conversation. It's a private company, so I'm not quite sure how that works. But it's much-needed for sure and.
Fantastic service.
We'll go from there. Councilmember?
As an ambassador for Thurston County Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to announce that Dispatch Health is having a ribbon-cutting on September 5th at the Olympia Senior Center from 4:00 to 7:00. And if you want to learn more, you'll get a chance to look at what they call their Rover, which is what they bring to your home. So, and they're also partnering with Senior Services South Sound and asking for donations for Meals on Wheels at that time as well. So it's an excellent opportunity to get eyes on the project and really learn firsthand.
What's the date again?
That is September 5th at the Olympia Senior Center from 4:00 to 7:00.
Great. Thank you for that information, appreciate it.
I would say 1998 for that equipment. To put that in perspective, I still had another year left on my contract. year left on my contract in Marine Corps. So.
And you're old, so.
Quite a little while ago.
Council, Councilmember Hearn?
So, I have one report. OLTVCB, aka Experience Olympia and Beyond, aka the VCB, met on Tuesday, August 20th, at the very pleasant River's Edge in Tumwater. And the items of discussion were, the main items of discussion were the 2020 budget, which was presented with a budget of $1.390 million, 39% of which goes towards salaries, which is within the range of responsibility. The Budget Committee combed through every line item, line by line, at their Budget Committee meeting, and, and reported and recommended the budget. What I liked about the budget is the concept of the, of our VCB in that they are not afraid to, they do a lot of things online, of course, to stay with the times. They're, they are aligned with the national tourism associations, which are very sophisticated. I mean, the same ones that New York City uses and Miami and whatnot. And they're not afraid to try something for a period, review it, analyze it, and keep on or switch out. So, they're very nimble and flexible on that, and I really like to see that. And that was reflected in, in this year's budget, too. The other interesting, then they had a report on, on communications and logistics plan, which also took into account their ability to be nimble and analytical. We had a presentation from a private consultant who's working to gain support for a downtown improvement district. And that district would be supported by the businesses of downtown Olympia and to help improve the district. Obviously, they have significant issues to overcome with the homelessness, which affects the economy, which affects safety, which, you know, affects a lot of things. And this gentleman is wanting, willing to take that head-on strategically. He, he comes with a resume of a former city manager, various different levels of experiences in different cities and whatnot. So, he's highly well-qualified, and, and he and his wife chose this area to, to live and work in. All he asked from the VCB was to hear his presentation and to write a note of reference for him as he goes out and does that. And the, the VCB did apply with that and wrote a statement of support for the things that he presents, that he'll be doing. So, we'll watch to see how that goes. Private citizen, private businesses stepping up to do something to improve downtown Olympia, which I think everybody in the region believes can do better as far as travel and tourism. It's a gem down there, and I, I am encouraged by, by this gentleman's plans. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Studdin?
I did not have a report, but I'm happy to announce that it's Congressman Denny Heck's birthday today. That was it.
Happy birthday, Congressman Heck. Councilmember Zeeman?
Thank you. The EDC does not meet until September 25th. However, I do have a few announcements. I'd like to give a warm, hearty welcome and congratulations to Kaylee Purcell, who is now the new Director of the Center for Business and Innovation at the EDC. That is exciting. Second order of business is on September 10th, SPSCC, where the EDC is housed, is having a ribbon-cutting for a remodeled building, which houses their advanced manufacturing, architecture, engineering, and construction technology programs. It is open to all people, but if you would RSVP to them, they would appreciate that. So, that will be very interesting. Third on my list is on September 26th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the Hotel RL, Thurston, EDC is having their 11th Annual Real Estate Forum. So, that should also be very interesting. And last thing is, in the city of Lacey, there is another ribbon-cutting on September 6th, and that is very exciting for the city of Lacey's economic development. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you. We've, we've reached the end of our agenda. As I mentioned before, we amended agendas, so, to adjourn to a work session. So, we're about to do that. Thank you, everyone, for being here and participating. Thanks to the council for another lively discussion. And as always, keep it classy, Lacey, and I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.